Welcome. I'd like to call to order the town council regular session. And the time is, is it seven, 7:32? And the date tonight is Monday, February 27th. We do have a sign out in the hallway asking for all cellphones to be shut off. I know that that's difficult for Chief Espia. You know, he can't shut his off. And I know some of the press. But if the rest of you could, please shut off your cellphones. There's no cellphone use. And I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I had a medical issue with a family member. And thank you, Carol, for running a great meeting. So without further ado, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale, could we have the roll call, please?
Council President Wadley.
Present.
Council Vice President Abbot.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Colby.
Here.
Councilman O'Neal.
Here.
Thank you, Dale. We also have the approval of the previous meetings. We have the work session from February 13th and February 15th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. And we also have approval of the minutes of the regular session, February 13th.
I move approval of the regular session, February 13th.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Seeing none, then I move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a victualling license to Smoothie Booty Cafe, 254 Robinson Street, Suite 102, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Robert Shoemaker, 17 Nichols Road, Kingston, Rhode Island. And this is a new license. Do we have Robert here?
Yes, I'm here.
If you could come to the podium and tell us a little bit about your endeavor.
Hello. Good evening. Technically, this is a new license according to the town because we've changed locations. But as you may remember, we started in 2011, 2010. This will be our third season with the Smoothie Booty. We were across the street in the Sawmill Building and the landlord needed the space for another tenant. So we got bootied out of the place where we were and lost about half of last season and have taken up new residence where Jennifer's Chocolates is, across the street, because she's taking over the place where the D'Amato's Jewelry Place was in the mall and expanding her space over there. So we're going to be in there with Mr. Kahoon in the Graphics Expressions Building. And that's it. So it is technically a new license for y'all, but for us, it's really kind of just moving across the street.
Great. Questions here at the table? Polly.
Are you going to be serving the same shakes and?
Yes, smoothies.
Foods like that?
Smoothies, cookies, muffins, coffees, pastries. And then we're going to expand into some, a little bit of like a very limited sandwich menu. But yeah, basically the same stuff.
Thanks.
Further questions here at the table? Jim?
Your hours of operation?
We haven't exactly figured those out yet. We're going to kind of roll with that one. We're probably going to open a little bit earlier than Jennifer did. We're probably going to start with seven because we want to work on the coffee business. There's a lot of people in that area of town and there are no coffee places. So we're probably going to be doing maybe seven to five, somewhere along those lines.
Thank you.
Great. Kathy?
I was wondering, I know that you liked it on the bike path and that was one of your features for putting in the Smooth Booty in that.
Yeah.
Do you think you're going to lose anything going across the street?
I don't think so. I mean, we're still right across the street from the bike path. The bike path was a good draw, but also the Sawmill Building is a difficult building for a retail space because there's no really good frontage on that building. It's more of a commercial building. So we did get people off the bike path, but a lot of people when they're on the bike path are exercising and they're like riding their bikes and they're like on a routine and they don't stop. So we got people with strollers and families, but it was very difficult to get people off the street in that location where on Robinson Street, you know, we're closer to Main Street. It's more visible for everybody. You know, it's really a better retail situation for us.
Good, excellent.
So.
I hope it works out well for you.
Carol?
Have you moved already? Are you open right now?
Jennifer's going to be out at the end of this month, so we've got two or three more days and then we're going to take the month of March to do a build out. And we're looking for an April 1st opening, April Fool's Day.
Right.
So hopefully we'll be able to make it. There's a lot of work to do, but you know, and I have the Bluebird Cafe as well, so it's sort of like an extra load on me, so.
It's a nice location, though.
It is. It's a great location. Beautiful building, yeah. So hopefully it will work out well.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Sounds exciting. All right. Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Robert, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our second license tonight is a resolution granting a laundry license to Suds Budz LLC, doing business as Get the Funk Out. Wanted to make sure that I clearly articulated. 100 Forton Road, Kingston, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief, application by Joseph Turcone, 29 Malcolm Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. And is Joseph here? Welcome. If you'd come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about Suds Budz.
Oh, Get the Funk Out.
Right.
Well, my partner, Scott, who is with me today and I saw the opportunity and took over a laundromat that wasn't doing that well. And we're located on the URI campus. Completely changed owners January 1st of this year and changed the name. Doing more of, I don't want to say concept laundromat, but we really want to get, we really want to emphasize what we're going to specialize in, and that's really time savings as far as really getting the word out in the community about our pickup and delivery service, you know, wash, dry, fold service, dry cleaning services. Really, and we're starting our focus on the URI campus because that's where we are and that's where we're going to do our best and then come on to the community.
I think a lot of the parents will thank you so the kids don't bring their laundry home.
That's what we hear. That's what we hear. And the name's really catchy, so we knew we could probably get away with it on a college campus and people had taken to it and liking it, so I think it was a good decision.
That's great. Questions here at the table? Polly?
Will you have washing machines as well as dry cleaning?
Yes. It's, right now, it is an existing laundromat with, you know, washers, top loaders, dryers. It's self-serve as well, coin op.
Yeah. And do you fold the clothes?
We do. We do.
Yeah, great.
Jim?
Dale, does dry cleaning because of the chemicals used require another kind of license to go along?
If I can just say something, we act, the dry cleaning is not done in-house. We have a licensed dry cleaner doing that for us. It's picked up and delivered back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further questions here at the table?
So you're doing the laundry? You're folding it?
No, not me personally. But I am in there, we're in there painting and doing a lot of stuff right now. So if you guys see the lights on at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, you know who's over there making the improvements.
Any further questions here at the table?
I'll make a motion to approve license B.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Joseph and Scott, best of luck.
Thank you, guys.
Which brings us to page three. This is public hearing. This is, I'm going to open the public hearing. This is relative to filing a small city's community development block grant, application for the program year 2012. The town is eligible to apply for $300,000 in funds for the purpose of undertaking activities that meet one or more of the following three named national objectives. First one is urgent needs. The second is prevention, elimination of slums or blight. And the third is activities benefiting low, moderate income persons. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
Thank you. This is the first of two required public hearings for the council to be able to submit an application under the 2012 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application process. Tonight's public hearing is to obtain citizen views on community development, housing needs, and program performance, if there are any questions relative to that. I'd also note that the town staff has already sent out to various local and regional social service agencies and municipal departments, application for the, for this program for their potential participation. The deadline for submission by the service agencies is March 9th of 2012. The, a second public hearing will then be scheduled with the council to actually approve the conditions or the, what will be submitted within the grant application with the eligible activities. In terms of background, this year's program has about $3.5 million that will be available to about 32 municipalities. I say 32 because there are several communities, West Wallack, Newport, Providence, and Central Falls, which are entitlement communities that are guaranteed funds through this program. All the other communities inclusive of South Kingston are required to submit applications and those applications can be funded up to a level of $300,000. The funds to be used for eligible activities include provisions of employment opportunities for low and moderate income individuals, improvement in housing opportunities for low and moderate individuals and families, and three, provision for community facilities or services principally benefiting low and moderate families and individuals. Tonight, we ask the council for authorization for staff to be able to accept the applications from the various agencies, prepare a prioritized list, and to bring that back for the second public hearing, which will be conducted on March 26th. Subsequent to the council's approval on March 26th of a funding application, it will then be submitted to the planning board, who must review and provide assurances that the application would meet all terms and conditions of the comprehensive community plan. The town has participated in this program, I think, for the last, I think this will be our 26th year. Funding ranges have been from a low of about $85,000 up to a high of $296,000. In the last round of funding for fiscal year 2011, the town received $296,800. Remember, that was on a potential $400,000 funding availability. The major funding were delegated to the following agencies. Washington County CDC for property acquisition, this was to buy an affordable, a portion of an affordable housing unit. Second was funding for Habitat for Humanity's Affordable Housing Project for another $50,000. So there was $90,000 for the CDC, 54 Habitat for Humanity. The town's housing rehabilitation program was funded in the amount of $84,000. Thunder Mist received monies for renovations of their facility in the amount of $5,300. Johnny Cake received money for the food and meals program of $20,000. And Welcome House received $20,000 in terms of operational expenses. So those are the type of fundings that have been provided over the past year. So this time, I'll turn the hearing back over to you and determine whether there's a public comment on the submittal of the application. And once the public comment is closed, I'd ask the council to consider directing the resolution that was contained on the February 21st memorandum for consideration.
Right. Before I turn it over to the public, I want to see if there's any questions here from the town council members? Jim?
Steve, is there any one outstanding urgent situation that we would emphasize with our application?
Until we see the application submittals, it would be premature to comment on that.
Thank you.
Carol?
Steve, how many application packages have you sent out at this point?
They've gone to any of the agencies that have received past funding, I believe, as well as the municipal departments. So I would suggest probably around 15.
Thanks.
Any further questions here at the table? Okay. At this time, going to open the mic for anyone from the public to come to the podium and speak on behalf of this public hearing. Community design block grants. With no comment, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. The public hearing is closed and can we have a motion?
Yes. To direct the staff to prepare the 2012 CBD, CDBG application to undertake eligible activities in a grant amount not to exceed 300,000. Further, to authorize the town clerk to order for advertisement, a public hearing relative to filing the 2012 Small City CDBG application to be held on March 26th, 2012, for the purposes of reviewing the draft application and obtaining citizen views on the proposed activities.
Thank you, Polly.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Next, we have our second public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance as follows. Article 8 signs, this is section 803, 803, signs prohibited in all zoning districts. The following signs shall not be permitted in any zoning district. Section B, this is flashing signs, signs which incorporate in any manner any flashing or moving illumination, animation, or illumination, which varies in color. This shall include but not limited to electronic message board centers, animated or intermittent LED lighting emitting diode, type signs, digital programmable ink, and all other electronable changeable copy signs. And this amendment for section 803B shall expire at midnight and the date is August 27th. So I'm going to open the public hearing and I'm going to again turn it over to Finn Murray.
I have a communication.
Thank you.
From Mr. Ed White, and he is supportive of the ban on LED signs in South Kingston.
Thank you, Dale. All yours, Finn. Thank you.
Good evening. The planning board had made a specific recommendation with regard to tonight's public hearing to extend the sunset date on the current prohibition against this use of this technology from this evening, February 27th, to August 27th, 2012. That recommendation was dated January 11th, 2012. Now, the planning boards indicated in their communication in that regard that their rationale for recommending the extended sunset date in the current ordinance would be to permit the town to conduct a comprehensive review of Article 8, which is signs, sections of the zoning ordinance. The board's proposal would, was that this review would include the current prohibitions concerning flashing LED and electronic messaging boards and expand beyond that to encompass a comprehensive review of the entire ordinance. The board suggests that the town engage in a broad-based community and stakeholder review process, which they termed a microplanning effort or a community charrette, similar to that, that we've been employing under the Healthy Places by Design Grant Program, which is now approaching conclusion. It was the planning board's view that the, such a community-wide public engagement process would lead to a more informed decision process concerning amendments to this area of the ordinance. And the board also made note in their correspondence that the South Kingston sign ordinance had not been reviewed in comprehensive fashion since the mid 1970s, I think 1976 to be more precise. In the board's view, recent developments in the community concerning signage in general underscore the overall ordinances lagging behind technological innovation trends in the industry and, and has resulted in some fashion in enforcement difficulties with reference to the current ordinance. You know, further, as the council will recall, we had a recent work session on the 15th specific to the LED and changeable copy signage technology at the senior center. And that provided an opportunity to gain information on the complexities of this technology and perspectives from the community. And in summary of that meeting, to some degree, we did have invited Speaker Robin Messier, who was representing LED manufacturer Daktronics, and local resident and electrical engineer and former planning board member Joseph Holquist, provided background information on the technology and issues concerning its application and regulation, particularly from the perspective of setting standards for the use of the technology and, and some of the complexities of measuring light impacts and to determine compliance with regulatory requirements. We also, that evening, talked about aesthetic considerations for signage, brightness and glare, lighting controls generally, cost factors of this technology versus fluorescent or incandescent technologies, and definition of flashing signage, manual messaging boards, and enforcement of regulatory controls. So we certainly had a lot of discussion on the issue with the planning board. It has made the offer to engage a very detailed process to, you know, really go through this from front to back and inclusive of this technology, but also a refreshing of the entire sign ordinance, which perhaps is timely, given the detailed community discussion that 's emerged on this one issue relating to the ordinance as well, so.
Thank you, Finn. Questions here at the table? I'm going to open it for a dialogue here at the table. Carol?
Finn, as we discussed at the work session, do you and the planning board feel that August 27th is kind of a, that's really being optimistic that this could be done by then? Or you think you probably need more time?
Well, that, perhaps. I mean, I think it was, the discussion on the 15th did, you know, kind of understore some of the complexities of trying to regulate this type of technology and, or even, you know, come to appropriate grips with how we'd deal with it from a regulatory perspective or, you know, if it were to be recommended for allowance. I know the planning board has in the past, as the council will recall, recommending, recommended that this technology not be employed in the community. But it certainly are complex issues, particularly if relating to any light and the technologies are emerging, so, you know, that, that could be somewhat optimistic, given our workload and other items facing the planning board and the town staff.
And seeing that you're looking at the entire ordinance, not, you're not just looking at that one piece anymore.
Correct.
Further discussion here at the table? Kathy?
So the talk at the pre-meeting was that we would take off the August 27th and not really have a, a date of closure with it, but just keep the prohibition in place for the sign and let the planning board continue on, is what I heard from the, from the work session. So as long as it I's and T's were dotted and crossed, that we make sure that nothing can go through.
I mean, the planning board, if that, if the council, you know, so directs, they would be happy to undertake that detailed review in concert with the town's professional staff and legal counsel and come back with something that would, you know, take a look at the entirety of that, of that section of the zoning ordinance.
Further comments here at the table?
I had another comment. I think we also discussed the possibility of a letter being sent to the planning board. Exactly what Kathy said, we would take away the sunset date, but also allow the planning board to, to do their due diligence regarding the entire ordinance, inclusive of the LED, LED lighting, and come back to us with their recommendation, be it for or against. And the other thing I would ask if the planning board could consider is, even if the planning board comes back recommending against the LED, that they also address possible minimum standards that they could live with as far as LED. And that would be the brightness, the, you know, all the different things we talked about at the meeting. So that in the alternative, if, if there were going to be any kind of ordinance that came out of this that would allow a minimal kind of LED, that we would have feedback from the planning board as to what kind of regulation we would be talking about. I think you addressed it once before, and it was brought up at the meeting on the 15th, different things about brightness, you know, no, no graphics, 25% of the sign, it was all different, different parts of the same, but it was all very restrictive. And I think we all came out of that meeting feeling like, you know, it's going to, it's very comprehensive, if you were to allow LED, that it would be a very comprehensive ordinance and it would really have to be studied. And I think even Joe Holquist had stated it, you know, probably need at least a year to figure this out. That was his opinion.
Right, he did.
Mm-hmm. But that would be the request I would make, that it would come back, once you guys get, you know, once the planning board gets their timetable figured out and a schedule of charrettes and hearings, then we would know better.
I mean, if that were the direction of the council, the planning board, I think we would develop a work plan with some specific dates that would fit within the town's schedule so that they, you know, to maximize the ability for people to attend and, you know, go from there. But the planning board has become very happy with the charrette-type approach that we've used for the Healthy Communities by Design, which is, you know, really makes a concerted effort to gain the broadest possible public input and, you know, from all sectors. And it helps to really understand the community's perspectives and a lot of times, new information comes from places you may not expect during that kind of process. There's a lot of epiphany-type things that emerge.
Any other comments here at the table? I also want to add that we have our chair of the planning board here in the audience, Maria Mack. And I don't know if there's any comments, Maria. The other thing that we did talk about in the public work session is that when you do plan your charrettes, you know, the town council, I know me for one, I'm going to try to be at all of them, so. And sometimes we have multiple things to do on a single night. So when you're planning them, if you can just keep in mind the town council would like to attend, we'd appreciate it. And we continue to work cooperatively with the planning board to get through this LED and we look forward to the planning board looking at the whole sign ordinance. So thank you for all the work that's been done. So Dale, I think, do you know what, the information, is it clear enough in a letter? Okay. Any further comments here at the table? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the audience and open the microphone up for any public comment. This is a work session. Podium, if you could come? Actually, I think this woman is first. Would you like to come to the microphone? If you could just state your name for the record and you probably want to pull that microphone down. Thank you.
Yeah, be sure. My name is Mary Lindsay, L-I-N-D-S-A-Y.
Thank you.
I have sent some emails to the town council about the LED lights, which I, I moved to South Kingston from near Agansett several years ago, so I apologize for my ignorance. But when did LED lights become legal?
Steve, would you like to address that? The history of the LED?
I think for-
I think first off, the LED was not, was not illegal. It was legally allowed within the ordinance until the council adopted the measure, going back, I guess, about 12 months ago. Because the existing language of the sign ordinance did not prohibit the LEDs from, from, from being allowed in the community. So, it wasn't until the council passed the amendment that's, that prohibited flashing signs with the definition included with the LEDs, that they were actually prohibited in the town. That's why there were two LED signs that were installed prior to that prohibition being installed, one at the Wakefield Pharmacy and at the CVS.
So, in fact, when they were installed, were they legal or illegal?
When they were installed, they were legal, yes, ma'am.
Okay, because one of them was flashing for a while.
The sign was legal, it was not allowed to be flashing when it was first installed. There was flashing and there was, I'll call it a misunderstanding on the property owner's pot. That person was visited by the zoning enforcement officer, who advised them that the sign could not be flashing and that the messages had to stay for an entire day. There was an agreement that was signed with CVS on the same requirements that they not be flashing. So, the sign isn't, neither of those two signs are flashing at this time.
I am concerned about the safety and the appearance. I think the appearance of the signs is totally unsuitable for South Kingstown. They're very bright. If you are, and I've emailed this to several people, if you are at the Peacedale Library and you're driving down the street to Old Mountain Lane, once you come around that curve, you can see the Wakefield prescription sign and, and the CVS sign, but particularly the Wakefield prescription sign, which is very, very bright, I think excessively bright. In fact, if you're driving past Wakefield prescription and you're stopped at that stoplight, it goes to Sweeney's. You know, I love chocolate. Sorry.
I'm with you, Mary.
That's how I do my, my locations. If you happen to be stopped at that light and that light is red and it's nearing dark or even actually during the day, that light is so bright that it is totally distracting. And I, I don't understand the necessity for having the light set bright. And also, I just think it is so out of character. We're trying to, to build the downtown and have some character to the town, and then meanwhile, we're putting up these huge, excessively large, excessively bright LED And I just think, another thing is, I'm very disappointed that the, the gentleman who spoke before me was talking about the public input, disturbed that there is not more public input, because everybody I talked to is against LED lights. And I called several friends, I talked to my family about coming tonight to the meeting, and they're like, it's a done deal, they're going to get what they want, they're successful businesses in the town, and they're just going to get what they want. And I feel like the public input sometimes is kind of, you know, negated by people, by large businesses, who think CVS has them, Wakefield prescription has them, they better give them to us. And I think the public is very discouraged, and I think there are a lot of people out there who are very much against the signs. I'm against them for safety purposes, because the first time I saw the Wakefield prescription sign flipping, I drove up on the curb, because it distracted me so much, because it was so bright and it was flipping. And I, I hope you listen to the input to, from the public, because there's a lot of stuff out there where people are very, very much against these signs, and mostly because of the character of the town. And I thank you for your time.
Yeah, and Mary, if I can just address, last February 15th, on Wednesday, we had a meeting over at the center to educate us better. In this sunset date, that is going to be taken away until the planning board gets to look at the whole sign ordinance, you're assured that, you know, it's probably going to be a good, good, anywhere from probably six months, nine months to a year before anything is done or any decisions are made. And I have all the faith in the planning board to collect public input with these different charrette-type meetings they're going to have. So, we appreciate you coming tonight to give us your feedback, and we definitely have listened.
Well, actually, I was going to go to that meeting, and I called the town hall. I did not get the name of the person I spoke to. It was a woman, she discouraged me from going to the meeting. She said the public will not be able to speak. And she said, anything that you're going to learn, quote, unquote, will be in the newspaper. She said I wouldn't even go.
Wow.
And I, I foolishly did not go.
Yeah.
I had every intention of going.
No, yeah, there, there was definitely a lot of public input. And if you care to share that with Mr. Alfred, the name of the person, not, not publicly now, but, you know, maybe tomorrow, phone call if you know who it was. There was definitely a lot of public input and a dialogue that went back and forth.
I don't want to blame anyone, because I do not know their name, but she specifically said the public will not be able to speak.
Yeah.
But, um, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming here, Mary, thank you. Please come to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ed White. I feel that the quality of life here in South Kingstown is probably the most valuable asset that we as citizens and as business owners have. There's been a lot of discussion about these signs, about the brightness, about the size of them. Frankly, I don't feel that that's even the issue. I think it's the signs themselves that are the issue. I think the signs are a slippery slope that will ultimately harm business. I really feel like it's taking the town in the wrong direction. We should be leaders and not followers when it comes to urban planning. We should instead work on beautifying the downtown area. And I came across an interesting report that was on the town council or on the town website. It was produced by the firm Horsley Witten, and they did a study for the Wakefield area. I'd like to read a paragraph that was in that study. It says, "The highway commercial strip along Old Tower Hill Road and at Dale Carlia was mentioned as needing improvement from a functional, safety, and aesthetic perspective. This first experience of Wakefield was viewed as largely negative from a visitor's perspective. Installation of street trees, consideration of a boulevard-type feature to soften the hardscape of the area, and better signage standards were suggested." So, I'm, I'm wondering why we engage a firm like this when it sounds like we're sort of ignoring what in fact they're telling us, especially around the signage standards. I think people come to Wakefield, excuse me, to, to live here and vacation here for the quality of life. I'm kind of the poster child for this. I moved here from New Jersey in the mid-1990s, and I moved here really to escape the urban blight that I think these signs are going to contribute towards. I am in a career where I could have made a lot more money in Boston or New York. I took a cut in pay, because I thought this was a great place to raise a family, and just the quality of life blew me away. What a fantastic town. And I feel that if that quality of life is eroded, we're going to risk losing tourists, we're going to risk losing more community members who might move here, and these are the people who support these businesses. I created a petition to educate others in town about this, because as the last speaker mentioned, I'm finding that a lot of people don't even know about this. So, I felt it was important to make sure people did, and I wanted to see if people felt the same way that I did. As I left for the meeting this evening, there were 246 folks who had signed that petition. And we really have not marketed it very heavily. So, it's quite impressive to me how many people feel strongly against this. I know the supporters of this ban have been labeled by some as elitist and having no skin in the game, and I would argue that is absolutely not true. We all have skin in the game. If the local economy of Wakefield tanks, we're all going to pay the price. I think back again to when I lived in New Jersey, in the late 1970s and the early 1980s, when the factories moved out of the town of Freehold, that town hit upon very hard times. The businesses that were ancillary to the, to the manufacturing businesses all suffered. There wasn't a person in that town who did not feel the pain from that. So, this is just, not just about the businesses, it's about the citizens as well. And I really feel that it's short-sighted to, to suggest that this will improve the business. I think it's actually going to, in the long run, hurt our businesses. With that, I'd just like to say that I think we need to take this town in the right direction and ensure that it doesn't become another Freehold, New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. And we appreciate the email that you sent us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the public?
Jonathan Daly LaBelle. I'm hoping, I don't, I don't know, is this a voting item? You're voting on this? What process you're starting up or, or no?
We're going to make a motion after we close the public hearing.
Okay. So, you know, it sounds like, I guess I just want to speak to this process that's being talked about, set up, you know, taken some period of months. I guess I'm hearing broad, broad-based community engagement process, similar to the Healthy Places by Design. And I made a lot of the meetings for that process, the Healthy Places by Design, and it really has been a tremendous process. It's been very welcoming. I think there's been, you know, hundreds of participants, you know, some professional, some people with the town, a lot of community members, and, you know, talking, you know, trying to create a more walkable, bikeable community, more village-centered community. And I think, you know, from my perspective, going to a lot of these meetings, if the process were similar to such as a meeting like this, it's very difficult as a community member to come up to the microphone here and feel like they have a voice and they're really part of the process. But when they're at a meeting, you know, such as all these planning meetings that, that occurred with the Healthy Places by Design, people are sitting at tables, they're able to have conversations, and the people who are putting all the information together are getting, you know, varied, you know, wide, widely-based opinions and thoughts shared by all these people, so then they can kind of really put something together. People feel like they've been heard, they've contributed, so then what comes forward, when it comes into this room, there's already been consensus being built. So, I think that's been, that has been a tremendously positive process, the Healthy Places by Design. I'm hoping it's going to get approved by the planning board tomorrow night. And I think that if the sign ordinance issue can be handled in a similar manner, you can really see much better outcomes than, you know, a traditional setting. And I'll just kind of finally say, you know, I can see that the town council gets it, and I really appreciate that. And, you know, setting up a process such as this, and if you can talk to your friends over at the school committee about maybe setting up processes such as this, it really would benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi, I'm Steve Corley of West Kingston, and my only thoughts about LED signs is that in general, an LED sign on Main Street in Wakefield does nothing to take business from Main Street and East Greenwich. LED sign at, say, Arnold's takes business from Damon's, which are competitors in town. It doesn't, they're, it's not taking business from someplace else. It's not bringing new business to town. It's, it's centralizing where that business goes within the town. And all you got to do is drive by URI all the time like I do, and you just kind of know what a sign looks like. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Further comments from the public?
Hi, Andrew Martinez, South Kingstown resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I would just second what I've heard, one, from the planning board's original decision and the intent behind the sunset clause, but I, I see no public benefit to this signage whatsoever. The town of Wake, the town of South Kingstown, the residents will not benefit from the signage. So, I recommend that we not accept the signage and negotiate down to mitigate any damage. We just, as a community, say, no signs, no LED signs, period. That's the, the point of view I'd like to see taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further comments from the public? I'm going to come back to the table one more time. Are there any comments, questions here at the table before we close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Actually.
Kathy?
Mr. White, if you have that petition with the 240 signatures, if, you know, you get the dates on the charrettes, I don't know if you can contact out or how your petition, you know, works, if it was through email, send out and let all those people know, too. I mean, we, that would be, you know, I think, a helpful thing. Okay. All right, so make sure that you get the dates, too. Okay.
That's good. And if the town can assist him in that as well, the more that we get with public participation at these charrettes, the more helpful it's going to be. All right, so we have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. And can I have a motion, please? Did you, somebody want to make motion for Dale to send that letter and?
Okay, so, I move that we maintain the, the ordinance, Article Eight Signs, Section 803, as written, without the sunset clause. So, we're going to amend, we're going to amend the Article Eight of Signs B, flashing signs, to take out the language, "This amendment for Section 803B shall expire at midnight, August 27th, 2012," and ask that a letter be sent to the planning board from the town council.
Do it separate?
Okay. All right, so first, we're going to vote on taking out the sunset date.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
Commandant Mike has something to say.
Something.
What you want to do is find that the, the ordinance is consistent with the comprehensive community plan and the findings of fact that you want to adopt consistent with those that were voted to you by a decision of the planning board that was dated January 11, 2012. Includes general findings, findings of fact, consistency with the comprehensive plan, and findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning. You'd make that part of the motion.
Thanks, Mike.
Still moved?
Second.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. And then can we have a second motion?
And I'd like to go forward with a resolution at this point, asking that a, a letter be sent to the planning board from the town council, informing them, obviously, that we've taken out the sunset date, and allow the planning board to do their due diligence in reviewing the entire sign ordinance, inclusive of the LED portion, and send back to the town council your recommendations, and also include, if possible, a minimum standard that would allow LEDs or, and along with your recommendation.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? And if any council member would like to add anything to that? And if any council member would like to add anything to that, you may feel free to do that.
Yeah, I just want to make it abundantly clear that it's, the Planning Board is going to recommend to us, after all these charrettes and hearings, what their recommendation is. And what I'm saying is, through all these charrettes and meetings, that if there is a minimum standard that could be, fit well within our comprehensive plan, that that would be something we would also look at, within the entire sign ordinance, which is quite a job, so.
Kathy?
I just, if they find that it's wholeheartedly against the signs to put the minimum standard in, I'm just having a problem with that. I just, I just don't know how that flows. In the work session, it didn't flow with me there either. I ju, if they find that, they come back to us and they find from the charrettes that there is an overwhelming, as we've seen at the session that we had on the 15th, most of people speaking out against it. As I said in the past, this is one of the, besides, you know, a budget time or, you know, a school referendum, probably more so, this sign ordinance has been so overwhelmingly negative to people, I just don't know why we put the minimum standards in there. I mean, if we have a prohibition in place, and it's a prohibition in place, so why give the option of having the minimum standards? I just can't bring that together. I mean, you can vote on it, but that, I just have to speak my piece on that.
Carol?
I think there's a distinct difference between the two signs that we're talking, that everyone seems to be complaining about, which is the two pharmacy signs. And then you have the one where the gas, the gas station has the prices. And you also have the one at, I think it's Newport, is that the name of the bank, where it's the time and temperature. Now, I don't hear anybody complaining about the time and the temperature at the Newport Savings Bank. Now, if that's something that people could live with, then maybe we should consider it. If it's something they can't, then, that's what I'm suggesting, then we don't have to go that route. But it just seems like there's a big difference between those two signs at the pharmacies and what the other two signs in town that, I'm not hearing any complaints about those, the gas station one and the time and date.
Kathy?
Because it's a message board, not the price of gas and the time changing. That's not, that wasn't the issue. That has been, as Mike has talked about, that's been a legal, that has nothing to do with...
Right, I understand that, but I mean, we could have message boards that would be that small also. I mean, they wouldn't have to be any different. Just a suggestion. In any event, we'd like the letter so that we understand and know when the schedule of hearings are.
Further comments, further discussion here at the table? So I think that we need to come to some consensus.
Well, I'll take the part out about the minimum standards. I just thought it would be nice to see both sides in the final analysis, what are both possibilities? Total, you know, a total ban versus some minimum standard, that's all. We don't have to do it that way.
Can I make a suggestion that with the letter that goes from Dale to the Planning Board, asking them, you know, for their feedback, that if it is coming back negative back to this table, the Town Council table, and there have been different items that have been discussed in the charrettes, could they please forward them with minimum standards for the lighting? Is that...
All kinds of lighting. I mean, not just LED, right? We want, we want that on, all kinds of signage lighting.
Right. So, I mean, that's a way to get feedback from the Planning Board. So, right now, I do have a motion on the table. Did we get a second on that? I think we did. We have a motion and a second. And we can have another motion. We can have, I believe, Mike, up to three motions on the table, so if we can come together on this, and if you want to pull it, Carol, or...
Well, I'll withdraw the minimum standard part, but I just thought it would be good to see both sides.
That's okay with the person that seconded?
I thought Carol's motion was a very fair motion, because we really have three, as she brought up, gas stations, banks, we have the two pharmacies, we have issues with uplighting, just, my issue was reducing overall glow. I think since we're going to be reviewing the entire signage ordinance, I don't think there can be just one answer to this. No. I just don't know how brave businesses will be to tell us what they might or might not need. But I think that's fair to take a look at minimum standards, you know, I really do, since a few folks jumped the gun, and, you know, sure, they have all the advantage. What happens if Walgreens comes in next? What are we going to do? No. I mean, you know, I really think we need to look at this. And I voted with Kathy the last time, you know, we lost out on a three to two vote, but I, I think we've got to be realistic, realistic with the technology changes in the lighting world. I think we can have a lot more control of just how bright this is. As I mentioned, sky glow, Joel brought up the parking reflection, parking lot reflection of those lights everywhere. There's a lot to look at here. I don't think you can come in with one negative without giving us at least an opportunity to look at what they did consider. I would like to think there would be options in there, and a minimum option. So, I like Carol's first motion there. So, that's right, Stan.
Let me go to Polly, and then back to Kathy.
My feeling was, and I mentioned this in the work session, I think the Planning Board knows what we would like to, them to do, the charrettes. We want them to advise us on this. And to summarize it, and I have no question that they will put in enough information for us to make a good decision. I don't think we need to define what we would like to get from the Planning Board.
Okay, and I hear that Carol, Carol's comfortable in pulling that. So, Jim, if you can accept that, I'm going to move to Kathy.
I just see this as an opening for LED signs in the future. And as we've just put a prohibition in place, I just feel that you're opening the door to it. And I'm going to vote against it, just to let you know. I just feel it's an opening.
You're going to vote against the motion, or if Carol...
We'll just vote, I guess. From the resolution.
Yeah, but if we have a second motion, we can address that, and the first one will go away. So Carol's willing to take away, provide for minimum standing for the LEDs. So is that your new motion, Ca?
Well, I can do that. I mean, I'm asking that a letter be sent to the Planning Board from the Town Council, allowing, and we're taking away the sunset date, to allow them to do their due diligence in their review of the entire sign ordinance, inclusive of LED.
Dale has it. Right.
I like that.
So the minimum standards is completely removed from that?
Well, I would like to hear from the Planning Board what minimum standards they do, they do look at. And now, if I, I can just send them a letter myself, I suppose, and say...
I know that, um...
This or that. I mean, we've spent a lot of time on this already. We've had the meeting on February 15th. We had the Mr. Messier, I think it was, from Delectronics. We had John, Joe from, Joe Hilquist, if I can get his name, Hilquist, Holquist, from, he's a local electrical engineer. I mean, we did really go over this, and there were a lot of questions still, I thought, that remain.
And as I stated...
If this could be aesthetically possible for this town, could this work in any way, shape, or form? And could we, by looking at the entire sign ordinance, come up with a standard that, like Mr. White was suggesting, that was in the report from Horsley Witten, that, you know, better signage standards. That's what we need all the way around. And, you know, there is technology out there that might help us with that. Before we exclude anything, let's look at it all.
And certainly at that meeting, they did tell us that light and brightness, all that can be controlled quite easily. It can really be limited with the distance that you can see there. I mean, I was very positive after that meeting, that they certainly gave us a lot of ideas. And I certainly hope the Planning Board would take a look at some of their thoughts.
And with the Planning Board setting up their charrettes so that, you know, we're going to be able to attend some of them, I think that, you know, we will continue that dialogue during all of the charrette, so. So, Dale, you have the motion. Would you like to read it back?
To the Planning Board, they do allege that they review the entire sign ordinance with LED, and they're going back to that.
I don't have a problem.
Okay.
We're good?
Good. Jim?
It's good. All right, any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Which brings us to communications. This is a communication dated January 27, 2012, from Jeffrey M. Willis, Deputy Director Coastal Resources Management Council, requesting the appointment of an alternate CRMC Subcommittee Member to act as the town's representative in contested matters. Continued from February 13, 2012, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and it's, we decided that we would appoint Vin Murray, the Director of Planning, as, to be on the CRMC, be the alternate CRMC Subcommittee Member.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? Kathy?
I'd just like to point out that, at the last meeting, that the council had looked back, and Mike Rice was the person who sat on the CRMC as the alternate. And then we sent a letter out to him about his, you know, if he'd be interested in the reappointment, which he sent back a message to Dale, that he received the letter about the reappointment as the alternative CRMC Subcommittee Member, to act as the Town Council's representative in contested matters, and he'd be happy to be reappointed. So, I feel badly that we sent that out to him, and then, you know, we change it now. So I just want to make it known that we did extend the invitation to him, and he accepted, and it's changed to Mr. Murray tonight.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and we do thank Mike Rice for the service that he has given. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to Communication Item C. This is a resolution adopted February 13, 2012, by the Town Councils of Coventry and East Greenwich in opposition to House Bill 2012. House 7250, an Act Relating to Labor and Labor Relations, Certified School Teachers' Arbitration That Would Mandate Continuation of Expired Teacher Contract, and Received, Placed on File, and the Town Council Further Directs. Polly?
We discussed this in the work session, and we decided to endorse this.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion and second. Any further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Which brings us to Communication Item D. This is a communication dated February 22, 2012, from Deborah Bergner, concerning the February 13 Town Council Meeting and the Pay in Loue of Taxes Agreement Authorized for the Southern Riddell and Chamber of Commerce, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council Further Directs. And if Deb Bergner would like to come to the podium and address her letter? Welcome.
I'm here, and I, back to address the matter that should have probably been handled directly and immediately on January 23. I asked some simple questions. It provoked insults and belittlement by a member of the Town Council, by Mr. O'Neill, directly at me.
Excuse me?
No, I'm retelling a story.
Could we just not mention any names? I'd appreciate that.
It's hard to tell a story if you're just saying he or she.
I really would like you to, from the prior meeting that we had, we, I believe it was Carol Hagan McNeet, had set the rule that we don't really use a Town Council Member's name. And I think that's been a history of this Town Council. So, thank you.
Sure. He spoke to me about my comments, and no one stopped him, no one reprimanded him, nor did anyone at the table say to me, a citizen should never be spoken to that way or treated that way after giving public comment. So I'm here to give you the opportunity, Mrs. Whaley, to offer me an apology that I deserve as a citizen and taxpayer, and then we can move on, because this issue hasn't taken on a, in my opinion, it's distracting from the ethical nature of the vote, so I'm here for the apology.
There's a few things. If you felt aggrieved, I do apologize. That is not my intent for anyone to come into the town chambers without feeling welcome. And I will continue to strive for excellence so that we do have the public feeling welcome at the podium. Okay? I do respectfully disagree that nothing was done. I did bang the gavel. I did put a stop to the discourse. I also banged the gavel a second time, because I live by high standards that everyone should be treated with respect. That's why I take every breath that I take. So, I feel as though I did handle the discourse at the meeting by putting a stop to it, and I can guarantee that I will continue to expect proper decorum from all Town Council Members here at the table, as well as the public. And at this point, I know that our town solicitor also would like to address some of the concerns in your letter.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that you said something. You did not, at any point, address me or the fact that I was spoken to in that way at the meeting. So that's, you know, I wasn't allowed to come back up and speak, so that opportunity wasn't given to me, nor was anyone speaking to me and saying, Mrs. Bergner has the right to come up and share. She's a taxpayer, she's resident. It wasn't communicated in that time. I think it's deflecting from the focus of the ethical appearances regarding the vote, and so if that's what we want to talk about now, I'm happy to move on. Thank you.
And I may have a plan for future meetings to address your concerns, so thank you. And Michael?
When the issue was first raised concerning the ethical considerations involved with the vote, I inadvertently referred to the Attorney General's Office as the department which oversaw that. That very day, I had actually been dealing with an open meetings complaint with the AG's office in another town, and I guess I had the AG on my mind. But clearly, when I got back to the council with my memorandum, it's really the Ethics Commission that has jurisdiction over ethical complaints, not the Attorney General's Office, so just to clarify that. The Ethics Commission will tell you that only they can make decisions on individual cases as to whether or not anyone has violated the ethics laws. And in fact, there's a memorandum out to all of us Town Solicitors that says, "You cannot bind the Ethics Commission," which I've never tried to do. However, the Ethics Commission has, in fact, issued several rulings with regard to individuals who are members of groups as opposed to being in leadership positions, on boards of directors, et cetera. And they've ruled on many occasions, I provide the council with at least two examples, that basically state that if you're just a member of the group and you're not in a leadership position on the Board of Directors, you do not have to recuse yourself. I've consistently given the council that advice from the very beginning. It's my opinion that the Ethics Commission would continue to follow its legal precedent. Even though I can't bind them, I certainly can give an interpretation. The town of South Kingston, like most towns, also have local rules and regulations that address ethical issues. But no, that I'm aware of, no town or city has their own miniature Ethics Commission. So, in essence, everything goes back up to the state. If a citizen has a complaint against a public official in any town or city, they basically bring that complaint to the Ethics Commission. So, in essence, the precedence in the state law that's been developed by the Commission over the years is what controls, in my opinion, even with regard to the local rules and regulations.
So, for the appearance of impropriety, with that bullet point in the Code of Ethics, that's where I would be going forward to the Ethics Commission regarding the facts in the vote taken on the 23rd?
You would have the right to do that, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be completely clear and upfront that that's where I'm taking my issue. I feel that there is an appearance of impropriety here. I appreciate that Mr. Shanley has raised the legality of the vote, so that it gives us the opportunity to pause and reflect on whether this matter was ethically improperly voted on. And I do feel that it is my opinion that the appearance of impropriety exists, and I'm grateful to raise this to the public's awareness.
Thank you. Any comments? Any comments here at the table?
I would just like to make one comment about, I don't, I just, I'm just speaking, it's my turn. I see no appearance of impropriety, and when you, when you consider this and even the bigger picture, we would be at a point where we would have five people up here who are totally disengaged in the community. If what you, if the argument that you could not belong to a group, or else you couldn't vote on anything to do with that group, if that were to be upheld, we couldn't even have kids in the school system and vote on the school budget. I mean, think about it. We couldn't, we'd be, we could, you'd have five people here who have no interest in the community, no, other than maybe owning a house. Could we even levy property taxes if we own a house? I mean, you're trying to state that we can't be members of anything, and the law is clear that we can be. And we can, we just can't control the organization, and we can't have a financial benefit. So, with that said, I respectfully disagree with your opinion that there's any appearance of impropriety.
Okay, and if you'd just direct it through me?
Sure. I would like to respectfully point out that it was said on the tape that a councilperson has benefited from her relationship with the chamber, admitted to being a member, and goes on at length on how beneficial it has been.
I also benefited from my kids being in the school system.
I was speaking, though.
All right, let's just go through the chair.
I just want to, I've heard the tape several times.
Right.
And I have heard, and part of the record, that a councilwoman spoke, said, "I'm a member. I'm a small business owner. I've benefited for this relationship. I've gotten referrals." So, that is a member of the public, public record. That is certainly a fact. It's not a conversation that happened in bagels between a council member and a chamber member or at the muse. It is fact that was stated, and it is part of the appearance of impropriety that I will be collecting and submitting. I'm...
You have, you have the right to do that.
Absolutely.
And we will await, when that happens, the Ethics Commission will contact us, and we will await the response. And I just want to end by saying that, you know, I hope that we will continue to work cooperatively and collaboratively together on the betterment, you know, of South Kingstown, because it is a great town, and I hope that we keep that relationship. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Do you want to just refer to me, and I'll respond in writing the way I've responded publicly, if you go ahead?
That would be great. I'm going to take another comment before we do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome.
For the record, I'm Maureen Martin, South Kingstown resident. I would like to address both of the issues that Mrs. Bergner brought up in her letter, and first and foremost, the apology that was due to her from the councilmen that shall remain unnamed. I think that he was the offender, and that he should be directed to consider that she deserves, as a member of the public who came here to speak her mind, as she has a right to do, and she should, he should, you should consider directing him to do that. And then, although I do respect Mrs. Bergner's wishes to kind of move on from here, that if that's not going to happen, then the actual issue that was addressed almost a month ago now should be moved along. And that's regarding the issue of the tax abatement to the Chamber of Commerce. As far as the ethics versus the appearance of impropriety, I was under the impression that the appearance was caused by the fact that two council members, town council members, actually received money from the Chamber of Commerce, and then voted in favor, and had actually changed their vote from previous votes on the same issue. So, I think that we can't lose sight of that, that there was whatever political donations that were made to two of the chamber, I mean, the council members.
Thank you. And at this point, I'm going to direct it to Mike Orsillo. Do we have a motion? To place it on file and turn it over to Mike?
Yeah, or somebody.
You direct that to Mike Orsillo.
Mike, you're done speaking on the issue, right? Yeah, and we will, yeah, and so we need a motion, and then we're going to turn it over to you?
What, move that both, that the letters be sent to legal counsel? That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Which brings us to Communication F. This is a communication dated February twenty-second, two thousand twelve, from Andrea Duran, Environment Rhode Island, requesting the town council send a letter to the President seeking the restoration of Federal Clean Water Act protections for our local waterways, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We're going to make a motion that we continue to place this on file.
Second.
You have motion and second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. This is the time where, if anyone would like to come and make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name. Steve? I see you looking around. Welcome.
I don't want to, you know, be first, but here I am. I'm Steve West Kingston, Steve Coral Shore, LEY, and I just wanted to bring up a couple things. I'm hoping that this is the year that Stony Fort Road gets fixed. Been waiting a long time, and I'm really hoping, hoping that that happens. Down on Plains Road, between Flags Road and Stony Fort Road, there's a whole bunch of little no parking signs that were put in at one time when they were building the parking lot for URI. I was thinking, if not all of them, at least most of those could go away to make the area look a little nicer, and it also would help public works and being able to mow and not have to go around all those little signs. I'd appreciate if that could happen, would be considered. I've never been able to see what's going on with Route 138 corridor being redone. I could read a little bit about what's happening at Upper College Road and 138, and there's, you know, a lot of things going on, but I think it would be kind of nice if we could give away some of the property in front of the, our library, and the university could give up some property where their sign is, and maybe between the town and the state, we could buy that lot that's behind the library. I think that the house that's behind that lot is rental property. If I was a landlord, I'd be happy to sell the lot if I could have public, you know, access to my house back there, so just something to consider. And then, at the transfer station, I don't know if we own it or waste haulers owns it, but the far end of the, where the bulky waste is dumped in back there, has been a mud pit for years now. It got fixed one time, but now it's a mud pit again, and try to back a trailer in there is very difficult. Be nice if we could put a concrete pad down there. Also, if we're responsible for the building, somebody ought to really take a hard look at those buildings down there. And taxes, I'm really grateful that the town council last year put a three-thousand-dollar exemption on vehicle excess tax. It'd be nice that if we could make the vehicle tax rate match the property tax rate so that people don't have a, feel that there's an injustice, i.e., the car tax rate's eighteen-sixty-five or something like that, and the house is fourteen-sixty-five per thousand. Why can't they all be the same? Why couldn't they all be the same fourteen, whatever it's going to end up at? And this year, I'd like, the school committee, I feel, has been unable to show diligence with taxpayer money. They had an opportunity to sell South County Road School years back to a charter school, and they failed to do that. Three years ago, the school superintendent said she could save upwards of a million dollars by closing a current school and still be able to provide a, a high level of education. That was not done. They finally reached an agreement where, okay, we're going to keep all the schools open, and now they've made a decision that we're going to open up, reopen up South Road School. I just think it's time to hold their budget to a zero increase, because they just are not managing the money that they are given properly, in my opinion. And that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, before Steve, just before Steve or Ella?
Yeah, Jim, if you could just address it to me, and if I can just, I see Steve taking some notes, so you will, I'm sure, get back to us on some of those comments that Steve has brought forward. Jim? Do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, the signage, are those the university signs? Are they the town signs, state signs? And what do they say?
The no park?
You mentioned the signage.
Well, on Plains Road, there's little no parking signs that are about that big, like every hundred feet down Plains Road between Flag Road and Stony Fort. And the sign I'm talking about up at the university on 138 is a huge, big University of Rhode Island sign that could be moved back away from 138 to give them more room at that intersection. A whole curb could be cut out of there if they needed to. Like I say, I've never seen the plans. It was just, we lose parking lots in front of the, the, the library, and we can get a hold of that park, get a parking lot behind the library. I think we'd be better off as a community.
Just one more question. I agree with you about the transfer station. I know when I back up there, boy, it's very close to disappearing into the pit. It's really quite a drop in back there, especially where you're, the landscaping debris, wood products, not the wood products, but really the grass and leaves and branches. It's tremendous drop-off. They could level that off. So, thank you, Steve.
Other comments from interested citizens? Maureen?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I have two brief things. One is, I'm a little concerned about the, under Communication C, the resolution adopting, I guess, the resolution in opposition of House Bill H. seven-two-five-zero, an Act relating to labor and relations, labor and labor relations. So, my confusion is, should I, I have been able to speak at that time before you made a motion to accept that? Or what is the process?
Mike, did you want to respond? Communication C, that I didn't go out to the public? We usually don't do that, but if you can.
Yeah, I mean, you're free, I understand they've taken a vote. You're free to comment, though.
Well, I really, most, I mean, I think, you know, as I said at the last meeting, you can't really put the rain back in the sky, and it's done, and it was going to be done regardless of what I had to say. But I wanted to clarify about the process. Should I have just raised my hand higher, or would it just?
Yeah, I didn't see your hand, and usually we don't, you know, every single time we take a vote, we usually don't go out to the public, but if somebody does acknowledge...
That's fine. I just wanted to know. And so, I, it seems like most of the work is actually then done in the work session previous to the meeting, and everyone pretty much understands what they're going to do with each item. Is that?
Yeah, most of the time, we have a dialogue. We try to have a dialogue on, you know, the agenda items. Steve will keep us updated, give us any new updates on the items. We get our packet delivered on a Thursday night, and then we prepare for this meeting, and we go through the work session, and Steve will update us on any of the items, so.
So, if the public member wanted to speak on something like that, should they come to the work session ahead of time? Would they be able to speak then?
Not usually during the work session. If you would have given me, you know, a high sign, yeah, we usually don't go out, but again, I'm going to refer to our town solicitor.
No, the work session is amongst all of you, but you are correct that when you go through any of these items, if there's someone from the public who wants to speak, and they're trying to get your attention, the tradition has, of course, you've allowed them to speak. I mean, they're not official public here.
I believe so, and I don't think you purposely didn't allow me. I think you just didn't see me because you were busy conducting business.
Right.
That's fine. Well, too little, too late.
No, please feel free.
Let me just say that, in my opinion, as a citizen here, that unless we have an alternative conflict resolution for school teachers to come to some resolution about a contract that's expired, I think it's kind of foolhardy to think that you can just kind of put an end to the contract. You know, unless school teachers have a right to vote, a right to strike, which they don't necessarily, I think that the need for them to have their contract continued, which is, as you know, especially as being a parent and by being on the school committee previously, that the contract does continue until a new contract is negotiated. And so, I think that all, this law, although I must say, I'm at a little bit of odds here because I, I couldn't, I didn't want to do a blatant act of civil disability and use my smartphone to call up the bill, which is what I normally would have done, to read the actual language of it. But assuming that it's the same bill as last year, it actually even has a very strict timeline on how long the contract would extend until you go to arbitration, and it addresses almost every single issue that every single town and every single city and school committee brought up in the last few years. So, it's too bad we didn't have an opportunity to talk about that.
It is the evergreen bill. It is the same, same bill as before.
The other thing I'd like to know about the cell phone news, speaking of, is that a new sign out there, or a new rule, or did it previously say to shut your sound off? Because it seems to me this is going to be a bit of an issue. There's a lot of people who would like to come, well, not a lot, obviously, but the few people that attend probably have children at home that they have to maybe text to, or find out if something's going wrong, or in an emergency, people like to get, be contacted. Or, for instance, in this case, I would have looked up the bill and been a little bit more knowledgeable and been able to speak to it, so I guess I'm wondering if it's a new rule.
That, that sign has been in existence. Steve, do you want to give us the timeframe on that sign? It's been around for a while.
I think it came about last summer, because we had a town resident that came in who believed that she was impacted by the, any type of electronic devices, and she said that she could not participate in meetings if, in fact, there were internet activities that were going on, or even a cell phone. She was complaining about the repeaters that are on telephone poles. At that point, the council asked as a courtesy for us to have that sign posted. So, it's probably been, I think, since last summer.
So, it would seem like it might make sense that if there was just that one person, unless she comes to every single meeting, that there might be some ability to offer her that accommodation when she's here, instead of having everybody at such a disadvantage. I know that there are people here who have children. My grandchildren are at home, and their mom is here, taking part in this, and I'm certain that the kids are probably texting her like crazy and wondering, so did she fall off the planet, the face of the earth or something? And, so I'd like you to reconsider that. I think if, you know, I go to a lot of meetings, a lot of hearings, a lot of sessions, I'm in court, and generally, the requirement is to just shut the sound off.
I too have kids at home that sometimes try to reach me during this meeting as well. Yeah, I know that several people over the, when this first was introduced, this sign out here, that they were distracted by, you know, so it's not just one person. There's been a couple of other people that have also said it's very distracting to be sitting next to someone that's, you know, their phone goes off, or they're texting back and forth. So, but we will, you know, probably talk about it further at this table at another date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from interested citizens?
Jonathan Daly-Labelle. I'm just looking at the page one of the agenda, and it's saying, "Members of the public shall be entitled to speak at regular meetings during any period designated on the agenda for public comment, once for a period of five years." once for a period of five minutes or longer at the discretion of the President and at other times when invited to do so by the President." So, I mean, you guys know I go to a lot of these meetings. My extended family here. I think historically, what I've seen is, on a lot of these items that come up, communications, you know, A through Z, some nights, you know, there's a thought process here. I think to some extent, the public, the community members need to trust their elected officials. And, you know, you can't have filibusters or such on, for every topic. So, you know, I think what I've seen with this council and previous councils is, as these items come up, unless it's a public hearing or comments from interested citizens or a communication that is actually sent in by a community member, that typically is not a community comment. I know it's the President's right to recognize the comment and hear the comment. And that does happen every so often, but it's very infrequent. And, you know, I think I would say, use your judgment to, you know, not have, you know, too much on every item. And I can just refer back to, not under this President's tenure, but under the previous President's tenure, coming to a lot of work sessions where there was, you know, hours and hours of work, you know, regarding some serious issues, a lot of budget-related stuff. And I'd have to go back through my notes to see what they are. And if, if people are interested, I can certainly do that. But there would be very critical, you know, and everything that comes before the town council is important. Okay, so I can, I'll acknowledge that. But some things regarding schools, budgets, planning, there might be a little bit more than, you know, if we start talking about, you know, water or sewer or that kind of a thing. And I can remember, you know, one meeting where it's, you know, specifically people wanted to speak after a certain agenda item. Hour and a half went by, two hours went by, through a lot of parents. People had to get home to the kids. It's getting to be 8:30, 9 o'clock. After 9 o'clock, people wanting to speak and the previous town council president saying, no, we have to get to the end of agenda before we open it up for public comment. So I just want to say in general, I've seen a much better tone this time. And there were specific instances from previous tenures where people have been made to feel very unwelcome and really almost asking people to waste their time. I don't think it's right for, you know, a young parent or even, you know, whoever, any older folk, anybody, to have to wait to get to the very end of a meeting if there might, might have been something on the agenda of that meeting that they wanted to speak to while it was still being discussed by our officials.
If I can just response, respond. I, I don't recall the, the meeting that you're talking about. I'm sure that it was a very hot topic if it was related to schools and budget. And, you know, every town council president that sits here is different. And I, I'm going to move forward that if people would like to speak on an item, if you just give us a wave, that we will, we will do that. If it gets to be an hour, an hour and a half, two hours, obviously there has to be some kind of a limit. We either will table it to the next meeting. So just so for future reference, people know how I'm going to address that. But I appreciate your comments.
Okay, well, just so I'm clear, you know, I think if there's an, an agenda that has, you know, the work sessions sometimes have seven items. And the first item or two are probably the most substantial items on that agenda. I think it's appropriate to open it up to the floor, which I have the sense that you would, to open it up to the floor for public comment, not making people have to wait till the very end of the meeting when everybody's worn out and the glass is over their eyes, you know? Okay?
That's what I would do.
I did just have a question. You know, you know, one of the community members was talking about the South Road School. Now it's going to get reopened, I guess, as a, as a town, as a district-run school, town-run school. And I'm just wondering, you know, the pension savings that came about happened in November. You know, so that became information received in November. There was a joint town council school committee meeting in December. There was a joint town council school committee meeting about capital improvement, the capital improvement program. And I did make the, the first meeting, I did not make the capital improvement program meeting. But I did look through the minutes and I didn't see anywhere where that had been brought up, that, hey, there was, you know, the, the worst of the budget mess, which were not through entirely, of course. I think most people understand that. The worst of the budget mess has been averted for the time being. And so now we're starting to think about different things and, you know. So I'm just wondering if I had missed something? Did it, did it come up? Was it discussed? Or is this just something that kind of all of a sudden, in school committee meeting in February, you know, something totally different happened?
Yeah. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was no discussion here within any of our joint meetings with the school committee with reopening South, South Road. And I'm sure that it will be part of the discussion when we meet. And I don't have those dates for the joint sessions with the school committee during the budget process in March. Do you know offhand what those dates are? But I'm sure that, that will be part of the discussion.
March 14th.
March 14th. So, we'll make sure that that, you know, that discussion does happen on March 14th.
Okay. And I don't know what all the legality and ethics and et cetera. But, you know, there was a vote, five to two, back last June for one plan. And then, you know, I'm looking at what's happening. All of a sudden, there's a different vote. So I don't know the legality and, you know, I'm sure it is legal, you know? But to just, you know, have a plan, have that be out in the community and then, you know, eight months later, it's something different without necessarily a lot of people being aware of it. All right. And I appreciate you wanting to move forward with this other issue, but it sounds like maybe it's not going to move forward. So I just want to put on the record. You know, because I, I do think a lot of this, I'm sure there's legitimacy to some of the issues brought forward and people can have disagreements and such, okay? But I think a lot of it's politics. I mean, you know, people, anybody that follows things at the state, you know, you got unions, okay, which generally I'm a supporter of, you know? I think everything has to be reasonable, you know? But generally, workers' rights, collective bargaining, these are critical things to people being able to survive and try and work together for their betterment, for basically the whole of society's betterment. Okay, so that's that. Then you got the Chamber of Commerce, okay? I've got a lot of disagreements with them on the national level. Locally, it's a totally different picture, okay? But one is business interest, the other is union, okay? I think that they could actually collaborate a lot better at the state level and at the national level. Okay, but I don't think you guys are going to solve that. Okay? But there's a lot of banging heads there. That's how things go sometimes. And so that's, a lot of it's, some of it's policy, some of it's political. And so when it's political especially, that's where I think a lot of this stuff comes from. So on one of the, the news sites, the Democratic Town Committee Chair made some comments. And in the comment, I just want to bring this out, that it was said, and, you know, to mention, this person is married to somebody who's on the town council.
We can just not do personal, personal identifiable information. I'd appreciate that.
All right. Well, the Democratic Town Committee Chair said, and he goes on to say other things and whatever. But in there, it says, "Sure, this is political, as are most issues that come before the council." And I think that's a lot of the problem. When it's in the chamber and these issues are being discussed, it should be on policy and what's good for the town as a whole, trying to look at the whole thing. It should not be political. And I think this has been a problem in this town for a lot of years now. And I'm glad to see it in black and white because words spoken are thin as air. Words written are always there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from interested citizens? I have a list of dates that I would like to just acknowledge. On March 4th, we have the privilege as a town council to be invited to an Eagle Court of Honor for three of our youngsters. So to Joe Matthews, the sculpt master. I will be there and I will call Joe. Does anyone, is anyone else going to be attending that?
What was the date on that? Again?
March 4th. Okay. And we also have the South Kingstown Kiara Spelling Bee, March 10th. And during the work session, I have a commitment from Carol and I. So we'll be soliciting two other members to be on that team to represent the town council. And I will RSVP. That's February 29th. I need that RSVP by. We also have this Wednesday, February 29th, a work session with the Economic Development Committee looking at the tax treaty. The other thing I wanted the town council to know that I've been asked to give some testimony with the education expertise that I bring, that I, that I have on a bill that will be presented to the General Assembly. It was supposed to be tomorrow and it has been moved, but there is a bill on dyslexia. So I probably will be down there giving some testimony. I also wanted to acknowledge the Union Fire District Award Ceremony. I was not able to attend, but the highest, you know, respect for all of the recipients of the awards and the resolutions that we sent. I was not able to be at the last meeting, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. And then tonight, I gave each town council a little business card from Experienced Real Estate. They also have a room on their second floor that they would like the public to feel free to be used. It's the building that Joe Frisella used to own. It's behind Belmont Dell's Lemonade down that side street. So they have a room on the second floor. They wanted me to mention that that will be open to the community. It holds about 40 people and they would welcome anyone to have their meetings there. So it's, it's a beautiful, beautiful facility. I also wanted to mention that South County Hospital is going to have their race. It is on the consent agenda, but I just wanted people to know that that is April 28th. I've participated in that race before, supports our local hospital. So, anyone out there, April 28th. And then last, few of the last-minute items is the Congress of Councils. I attended at Meadowbrook End. This is sponsored by the Washington Counter Regional Planning. And they had Gary Sasse as a speaker as well as Sheldon Whitehouse. And then Healthy Designs has been brought up. I'm sure the town council has received this invitation. March 16th, 9 o'clock at the University Club. This is the Healthy Designs. So, "The Town of South Kingstown, the South County branch of the YMCA of Greater Providence cautiously invite you to the release of the South Kingstown Healthy Places by Design Project Report." Did the rest of the town council members get this invitation? Right. So I just wanted the public to be aware of that. And last but not least is, I've been invited to the Girl Scouts. It's once a Girl Scout, always a Girl Scout. And it's Saturday, March 10th at Father Green and Hall. I've been asked to go and speak to the youth there. So I will be attending that. Any other dates that the town council would like to bring forward? All right. With that said, let's move on to Town Manager's Report.
You missed one, Ella.
Did I? What?
The Community Business Outreach Forum in South Kingstown is going to be held on Friday, on March 2nd. That's going to be from 8:30 till 10:00 a.m. and it's going to be at Palisades Mills. This is going to involve the Governor's Office, the State Economic Development Corporation, EDC, the Town of South Kingstown, Small Business Administration. And it will be a community forum to hear from local businesses and to discuss ways to help succeed or grow the economy and create jobs in Rhode Island. It'll also provide an opportunity for one-on-one appointments to then be set up with various businesses, with the different business interests that'll be at the table. So we would invite any and all residents and particularly businesses in town to pre-register for that forum. To pre-register, you can call the Planning Department or email to vinmurray@southkingstonri.com. We're hopeful that we'll have between 40 and 50 persons that will be in attendance that morning. And hopefully this will help our small businesses in town to understand what services may be available to them as well as what federal or state programs may be available to them. This is something that has been asked of the council in terms of providing this type of a forum. And the Governor's Office has agreed to, I believe this is the third that the state will be conducting on, on Friday, March 2nd. Other than that, I'll answer questions on the reports that I've issued today. I would comment on Steve's concern on the motor vehicle tax and the tax rates. We don't set the motor vehicle tax rate. Motor vehicle tax rate is set by state statute to be what the rate was during the 1998, 90, I think it was 1998, 99 fiscal year. So at that point, South Kingstown's rate was $18.71. It's been frozen at that rate based on the action of the state. That went into place at the time that the state began providing reimbursement for the abatement of motor vehicle values. The reason they froze the rates at that time is that they didn't want communities raising the rate to be able to increase the revenue coming in from the state. Unfortunately, they've left the rate frozen at a time when they've stopped giving us any reimbursement at all. But that's why the rate is, is set up as a differential. We will look at the, the issues that you brought up, particularly as far as the signage in Plains Road. We'll look at the issue as far as the transfer station and the bulky waste area. I would note that the facilities are leased from the Town of South Kingstown. That also requires within that contract itself that the buildings would be in a proper condition at the time that that lease expires. So, normal wear and tear is one thing. However, if there's damages that have been done to the, to the facilities, they would need to, to have those corrected. If they're not corrected, there's bond that's been posted to be able to protect the town's interest on the, the assets that we own at that location. I also wanted to mention that the 138 reconstruction plans are readily available in the Planning Department for review. There's detailed plans that are probably 300 sheets long. But anybody who does have questions has the opportunity to be able to review those in-house. I'd also note that the, the town's Project Area Committee, that's appointed by the council with representation from the university as well as the Kingston community, has been working in conjunction with the state DOT for the past 10 years. And I think that at this point, they're approximately at 90% construction plans. And the only thing that's holding it up is the review through DEM as far as the stormwater management that will be a, a component of that, that reconstruction plan. So certainly I welcome anyone who does have questions, wants to review the actual detail, if they can stop by the Planning Department. And if there are specific questions that arise that can't be answered, we'll forward them to the state DOT.
Thank you. Jim?
I was hoping you'd have good news for Steve on Stony Fort Road.
John, where do we stand with that? Could you use the mic, please? It all depends on what portion of Stony Fort we're talking about.
Yeah, I was going to qualify that. From 138 to Slocombe Road, we're about 95% completion on the design. Hopefully we'll have that done in the next 30 days. And we're doing quantities and takeoffs now because we need to sit down with the Town of North Kingstown because they own half of the road from Slocombe to where it turns south and heads towards 138. So we've already had preliminary discussions with North Kingston. They need to know what the anticipated cost will be. So once we get some favorable direction from them, we hope to be out to bid.
But from Slocombe Road going west?
Slocombe Road to 138. Oh, from, from Slocombe Road to- Slocombe Road to 138. Oh, from Slocombe Road to the west. We initially started the, from Old North Road to Slocombe Road, we have pushed that back because the southern, or the easterly end is worse. At this point, we don't have any plans to go from Old North Road down to Plains Road. That's, you know, down lower in our list as far as priority goes.
One of the things that we're attempting to do, as the council's aware, through the capital improvement program, is to dedicate more funds toward the road constructions. If there's dollars that can be transferred out of the Highway Department program by the end of this year, it may allow us to be able to accelerate some of the road projects that we want to do. That one is on the list, but it's really in pre-plan, pre-planning at this point. So, I want to make sure that we recognize that we're dealing only with one portion of the road from Slocombe going east to 138. That will be done this summer.
Correct.
Or fall at the latest. The other sections are still in pre-design.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions here at the table for Steve? Town Solicitors' Report? Okay, and I believe we have no appointments. I do want to put a request out there if anyone would like to apply for any of our boards and commissions. We do have some openings, so, just put that out there publicly, a request. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Abstention. Motion carries 500. Meeting adjourned at 9:22. Thank you.